May I have your attention please? Before we get started with the meeting tonight, we have Pastor Richard Davis Bubby, as he is known by all who know him, lifelong resident of Johnson County, graduated Johnson Central High School in 1992. He's going to lead us in a word of prayer before we begin our meeting.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much, God, for the many blessings in our life. We thank you, Lord, mostly for the wonderful gift of grace and salvation, Lord, that comes in your son, Jesus Christ. Father, I thank you for this school system, Lord, and I thank you, God, for the many people that you have placed here that make differences in children's lives every single day. God, a lot of these children don't know love other than when they're at school, and a teacher or an administrator, God, takes the time of other day to make them feel special. Lord, I pray that you will challenge every teacher's heart, every administrator's heart, and every custodian and cook, father and bus driver, to remind them, God, their labor is not in vain, that what they do, Father, they do for your glory. Lord, I thank you for just the unbelievable how you have blessed this school system. God, as we look around, we see that we are so successful, we are so blessed, and we know that every good and perfect gift is from you. Lord, I pray tonight, God, that you will just continue to have your hand upon these kids, keep them safe, Lord, every single day, but, God, I pray more than anything that they'll understand the only victory in life that matters is the one that comes through and by your precious son. God, you are awesome, and I thank you for the privilege of prayer, that we can bow our heads anywhere and ask you, Lord, for your help when you stop bending your tracks, God. We have your undivided attention. You are that kind of personal God. Lord, again, we thank you for all that you do. We thank you, God, for your many, many blessings. I ask now, Father, to have your hand upon this meeting, and let a great glory to your son. In Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Thank you, sir. Bless you so much.
I'd like to call the Johnson County Board of Education meeting to order right before 2:00 p.m., 2008-10. That said, I'll turn it over to Johnson County.
To begin the meeting tonight, as always, we want to say the Pledge of Allegiance. To lead us in the pledge tonight, we have Johnson Central High School junior, academic team member, and I believe just recognized as being a governor scholar for this summer, Ms. Jolene Fairchild. Would you come on up, please, and lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, as we always do to begin each meeting, I'd like to ask students to read their mission, vision, and core values of the Johnson County School Systems. So I ask Ms...or I'd like to ask Key and Clark, eighth grade band student, to come up and read the mission, vision, and core values.
Johnson County School's Mission Statement. The ultimate educational experience for every child, every day. Our vision and innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries. Core values: integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
Thank you, Key.
Next, we have student recognitions.
First, we would like to introduce our JCMS band, as part of the KMEA Association. And last, a couple weeks ago, Ms. Lutz took the middle school band students and earned a distinguished assessment score, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lutz to brag on those students and to introduce them.
Paul, are you going to say something first?
Of course, anytime...you can see we have a bunch of students in the building, Ms. Clark. These are all middle school students, some high school students, but mostly middle school students. Of course, we always, anytime we have a chance to brag on our kids, we like to, we're celebrating and celebrating their successes. I don't know what's going on, what Ms. Lutz is doing, but I know about every day, at least when they're preparing for these competitions, they always want to go over and prepare. So they are a community bunch, and proud of them. I'll turn it over to Ms. Lutz.
Okay, so basically, KMEA assessment is very similar to state testing. It's basically assessment for bands, and this goes on record and it stays there. And as far as I've dug back, I've dug back almost fifteen years' worth of state records, and the Johnson County School System has not had a distinct win span in at least that long, probably since Mr. Daniels was here himself. It's not slightly out there, but these kids worked super hard, and the last time we went, we were actually in apprentice bands, so...and that was a step up from where we'd been as not going at all. So these kids work really hard this year. I mean, I can't have enough good things to say about the middle school band. They are so dedicated. They will go and they'll do their homework extra early, or they will do their classwork during their free time, their recess time, so that they can come over and practice extra for another period of band class, so that they can try and have double band classes. And they've also been telling me they, during the recess, they've been practicing for marching band already, and during gym time, if they're not...if they get free time during gym, they're marching, they're pulling out their instruments, and being told to us sometimes that they really, they really are great musicians, and I'm super proud of them. And so I'm going to go down with one, and actually, several of these students, not only did they work really hard to get their distinguished rating in festival, several of these students also made all district band. I have fourteen middle schoolers and one high schooler make all district, which is fifteen, which more than doubles my highest amount of kids to get in there ever, and that puts us way up there with the Pike County School System, so that's also another amazing feat. Starting from the end, we've got Tucker.
When you call her name, if you don't care if they want you to get behind for a moment, say they want to get a real picture.
This is Tucker. Tucker plays alto sax. Meredith, Meredith plays trumpet. Summer, she plays clarinet. Brent plays bass guitar. Austin plays euphonium. Lakin plays bass clarinet. Courtney plays clarinet, and she also made all district for the second year in a row. Ally plays clarinet, and she made all district this year. Alex plays snare drum, he made all district this year. McKenna plays flute. Oh, Lord, I got two twins. Keegan, right?
Yeah.
Okay. They don't hold their instrument, I have a hard time. Keegan plays trumpet, and he actually, he made all district on his trumpet and also on euphonium, so he actually made it on two instruments. And this is his second year. Chloe here plays trumpet, and he actually made it on two instruments as well. He played, he auditioned for trumpet and euphonium and got selected for both, and now he's learning to play the tuba. This is Jesse. Jesse plays clarinet, and he made it to all district band. Kelsey plays clarinet, and this is her second year making all district band. Kealan plays flute, and this is his second year making all district band. Kristen plays flute. Hey, you come out of here. I'm going to talk about you in a second. Andrea plays flute, this is her second year making all district band. Lauren, you guys don't know this kid, do you? She plays trumpet, she made all district band. Delilah, she plays clarinet and bass clarinet, she made it on bass clarinet for all district band. Logan plays alto saxophone. Can we call you DL with this? This is DL slash Devon, he plays alto saxophone. Chloe, come around. Chloe plays timpani and bass drum. And then I want to talk about these two kids. This is Bruce. Bruce actually isn't even in middle school yet. He goes to Central Elementary School. He's just a sixth grader, but he is so talented that I actually brought him up to play with the middle school band, and he auditioned for middle school all district and made it this year. And this is Katie. Now Katie's not in middle school, she's a high schooler. However, Katie does, where she is a senior, two of her class periods a day are actually to work with my middle school band. She's like my assistant. So not only did she help prepare them, but she made all district for high school band, and she made all district for high school jazz band, and she has been accepted into Morehead State University's trombone studio, and will be attending Morehead as a music major next year.
My daddy.
No, I'm just getting video, and I'm going there, which way?
Like Jim, thanks to all for your hard work, working for Johnson County School.
Oh, you have to say it. Katie plays football, too.
The next group that we want to recognize tonight, we want, as you know, the Johnson County Middle School, Johnson Central High School, attended Governor's Cup State Competition back earlier, and we want to recognize those two teams for all of their winnings and all their accolades, or give them all the accolades. So we'll start with Ms. David LaMash with Johnson Central High School.
I'm back here. It's been a crazy day, you and Lucy, all today. But I want to thank you all for your support, because what we do, we couldn't do without you. We traveled to many different competitions in the state. It's always that people look and say, "There goes Johnson Central." They look for the flag, and they're intimidated by us. But we couldn't be that way without you guys, and we truly want to thank you for all the support that you give us. And with that being said, I want to talk about the kids. We'll introduce them all here in a manner, and we'll talk a little bit about our accomplishments. And throughout the year, they've traveled to numerous competitions. Last summer, the JV team went to the National Academic Competition in DC, where they took first place. They finished in Fleming County fifth place, but at state, we did really well. Chloe Deskins, who's not with us here tonight, was also in CNPS, she took first place in the senior division. Peyton Duncan, Peyton, you over there? Smile at me, girl. She took first place in scenario. Blake, also placed third in scenario. Our FPS team overall placed third at state. Quick Recall placed fourth overall. Leah placed tenth in language arts, and one point separated...or Jolene, Jolene, give me your smiley face here. In tiebreakers, one point separated those two in tiebreakers. Megan, forget. Megan placed sixth in arts and humanities. Crystal, not here, placed seventh. Overall, we placed sixth as a team. We also had students participating in other components of future problem solving, and those are magic and individuals. In magic, and with magic, that means that one of our members is paired up with team members from other schools they've never met. For example, find a way to compete, and they may be someone from Dunbar, someone from Western Kentucky, and we all get together and we write a booklet. So out of that, Chloe's team placed first, Haley Prater's team placed second, and Raleigh Castle's team placed third. Back to testing, ended up skipping JP Dials. He placed twelfth in science, and that was one point from time for seventh place. That's how close those scores are with all that testing. At this point, I want to introduce my FPS that are here. Come step forward, please, and then I'm going to let Mr. Booth, because he does more with Quick Recall than I do with Quick Recall. And these guys will be going to internationals with us this summer to compete. Blake Confron, Leah Blair Senior. Emily, our other senior, is not here tonight. On her way back, she had a plane towed her car, but she is okay. And you did not know that, huh? Okay, yeah, she gave me that. That was her excuse for not being here, I think, because she's okay, though. Sarah Thompson, our alternates, let's see, Chloe's not here, Haley's not here. No, none of our alternates are here. Scenario going with us is Peyton. Do you get the rest, though, Mr. Richard?
Do you want to announce everyone?
Yes, everyone, all the others. And you guys step forward when he calls your name.
So this year, we have, this year, we only had one senior returning for us, and that was Ms. Leah Blair, who you've already met. And Leah Blair finished tremendously at state, playing some unbelievable games, really showcasing her attitude. And juniors this year, we've got Mr. Brandon Fairchild, Jolene Fairchild, Karim Meek.
You guys, over here to the middle, come on. Come on, if you're on Quick Recall, come on. Over here. Makes it a whole lot easier. Karim.
Sophomores this year, Cornelius Allarms, Harry Austin Cantrell, JP Dials. And then for our freshmen this year, we had Clay Moon, Peyton Sargent, Colin Clevenger, And then now with us here, we have Ms. Crystal Stambo and Ms. Amelia Kretzer. We thank you guys so much for your recognition, and we appreciate your support.
And let's have all of them come up here and get behind the board. Mr. Brown, as they're coming up, you may want to brag on, I know you're very proud of all their efforts and accomplishments, you may want to talk about the other coach, Ms. Ford, I know wasn't here, wouldn't have been here.
Well, I can say honestly that I've been to several Governor's Cups, but this, the Quick Recall group right there that they just called off, the match against DuPont Manual that morning, I thought was one of the most dominating performances I've ever seen from a, from a team ever. I mean, they just had, to be a magnet school, they just dismantled them, so I was really proud of that and the effort that everybody's made this year.
And now, we'll move on to our last group to be recognized tonight, and I will turn it over to Mr. Hall to introduce the coaches, but I want to say before I do, very proud, could not be more proud to say that they are being recognized for their fifteenth, among other things, their fifteenth state championship, KAC, so very proud of that.
Mrs. Burden is no stranger to these recognitions in the board meetings, but her and I were talking earlier today, and she probably won't mention this, but it's really not easy. I mean, she makes it look easy, or kids make it look easy because of the time and the work and the commitment they have. And as an athletic coach, I mean, it really kind of, it really kind of humbles me because, I mean, I feel guilty sometimes of all the times, they don't take days off, we take days off. We'll actually, we'll literally have to tell her she can't practice before she would take a day off, and her kids are that committed, and they come in on snow days, they come in throughout the summer, and they're always working. She always wants us to come up in our classroom and watch her kids, and it's exciting to watch some of the things that they accomplish and that they can do. But I'll let her introduce her kids. We're very proud of them, they've done a lot, and like I said, every group's different, and they keep winning. And like I said, it's not easy. Every group, every year's different, but they put the time in, and they earn it every year.
I recently read where our Commissioner of Education got, but Chloe had to leave because of public school in Kentucky were not achieving what they were supposed to be achieving. Is that correct?
That's right.
I just want to make sure, because we are a public school system, and we are more than just a championship. And the reason for that is because of the investment that you make in these kids. I have possibly thirty students who compete in academics throughout the year, and a lot of them are here tonight, some of them are not here, but most of them are here. And those high school kids that were up there, they are also state champions, so I stress that. I can think of no other program where you invest a thousand dollars in a person and reap the rewards that you reap from these kids. Because if you think about the money that's being spent for them to compete, and you think about the number of students who are involved, and the impact that you are having, it is far reaching. I was sitting back there thinking about where the students that have been a part of our academic program are today, and they're, they're in Washington DC, working with AIDS programs to help people that are developing, developing countries. They are lawyers, an endocrinologist in Indiana. They are dentists, Dr. James Stambo, the captain of the first Quick Recall state championship team at the middle school. They are lawyers, they are teachers. One of them is right now in Vanderbilt, trying to find a cure for cancer. The investment that you make in these students is far reaching. Not only does it bring recognition to Johnson County, but it prepares these students to go out into the world with the attitude, "I can't." Now, I was thinking about the story of the Little Engine That Could, because several years ago, when I moved here, and you've heard this before, and I'm not going to say it long, I was told by some people that I respected that we cannot compete across the state, that we were at a disadvantage, that we can never compete with schools like Mizzou or Hall, or Dunbar, or DuPont Manual, or Winburne, whatever they, they used to be like some traditional magnet schools, that we could not compete with them because we didn't have the same opportunity that those students have. That's a fallacy. Because of you, these students do have the same opportunities, because you allow them to compete against the best. And you know, in any competition, you are only as good as the people you compete against. So I know how expensive it is for academics. I promise you, the lives that you are affecting, the individuals that you are changing, it is the greatest investment that you can make, and I humbly thank you. Now, think about what was said a while ago by our, I would like, I know who you are, I tried to, but I'm like, "I know who you are." He made the comment about the privilege of prayer and the personal God, and I thought, what wonderful words, the privilege of prayer. You are an answered prayer, because you continually believe in these kids. This year, before state competition, and this is my chance to say thank you, so I'm doing it, before state competition, we had two different entities that wanted to talk to us. Never had we had this happen before. Kentucky teacher, and if you did not see the article, it is a wonderful article, called us, and talked to Zoe, and wanted to find out, well, don't you think it's, you're called a geek or a nerd? I mean, didn't she ask you something like that? She did, and Zoe was like, "No," because you make it court smart. Isn't that wonderful? We don't have to worry about, they don't have to worry about people looking down on them because they're so smart and they work hard, instead, they're admired. Wow, that's what the world needs. We need to admire people that are hardworking. And so when they, when a woman asked Zoe that question, I was like, "Duh." I thought that was old time, and I don't want to pass that. That's why the rest of the state's not as successful as we are, because we embrace this attitude that we can achieve. Preacher Committee, Lonnie Hart, four hours, four hours, you know how long he came to stay. He came to our school about one o'clock, and he stayed until five. He's doing a special article about the climate that allows these kids to achieve, because I promise you, if you hadn't supported these kids, and if we didn't have these people, I would have quit coaching a long time ago. Because I don't care how hard you work, if you don't have people who believe in you and who support you, there comes a point in time that you say, "I quit." How can we quit when we have people like you who help us? And when you have kids like this, you don't understand how hard they work, but they're fun. I want to dispel the rumors. How many of you all play soccer? Volleyball? Hands up. We have, they do, they do other things, and they have fun, they're well-rounded people. Softball, Macy Collins is not here, because she's playing softball. Now, I know what it was, but it was important that you heard that, okay? Because you don't know how much longer I'm going to be around, so I had to say it tonight. I want to tell you about the kids this year, and I want to start out by telling you, three hundred sixty-eight teams competed in Governor's Cup. Three hundred sixty-eight. That's public schools, private schools, independent schools. We're number one. Number one. Three hundred sixty-seven is cool, can't say that. Yeah, cool. Not only that, we are number one in Quick Recall. Quick Recall, stand forward, come on. Come on up, come on up. Up here, up here, come on. Quick Recall, do you play Quick Recall? This young lady right here, the only person in the history of Johnson County Middle School who has been in the top ten two years in a row in mathematics. We have. Leah Lawson, the captain of our Quick Recall team. I know that her friends at the high school are so happy that she's going to join them next year, because you know we have a state Quick Recall championship team in the back standing, to Lawson, down in Kansas. Not only is Zoe a bad kid, she gave you a birthday card today, too, so. She is also the runner-up in language arts, so this is our captain, she tested in math, she tested in language arts, she was on the stage in all three bands. Congratulations, Zoe. This is Bryce Blanchard. Bryce is really fun to be around. Sometimes he's frustrating to be around. He is eight, but he plays Quick Recall, he's a starter, and he is sixth place in social studies, helping us win this Governor's Cup. Thank you, baby. This is Bryce. Two years in a row on the stage in social studies. Come on, Sarah. We have someone out here. This is Sarah Coleman. She also plays Quick Recall, she's our number five, woman, person, whatever. Two years in a row, she's been on the stage for testing in language arts, she was sixth this year. Eight questions left. On the stage, Sarah's last year, so she came up a place. Come on, Haley. This is Haley Tackett. Now, you know, you only get to be recognized on stage if you're on the top ten, but Haley was in the top fifteen in language arts, she only missed the top ten by two questions. Haley Tackett, she also plays Quick Recall, she's also really good in science, but I made her focus on language arts. Thank you, Haley. Well, I've got Jocelyn up here, Jocelyn plays Quick Recall. Now, both Jocelyn and Haley came from other school systems and joined us this year. Haley came from that place across the creek. I mean, right, Haley? Yeah, she did. And she came to us from Ashland Independent, right? This is Philip Wyman's niece. I got it right, I've got to make sure I got it right. Jocelyn plays Quick Recall, wonderful, wonderful, A8 person. She was also fifth in the state in scenario writing. Congratulations, Haley. This is Jocelyn. Ben is a seventh grader, Ben is from Porter from last year, he is a wonderful Quick Recall player, he has such a social studies college, I'm really excited. He's coming back next year, and he's really great. Thank you, baby. He plays Quick Recall. Come on, Chase. I have someone out here, I want to tell you. This is Chase, Chase Cantrell, he does the buzzers for us, and we cannot play Quick Recall if we don't have a buzzer operator. Meredith McNally, and she does have a shirt, but we didn't know whose shirt it was, so she gets it back tomorrow, somebody else borrowed it for the season. Meredith also runs the buzzers for us. Meredith was fourth in the state in scenario writing, so congratulations, folks. She also not only was state champions in the recall She also, not only was state champions in the recall, we also have the state champion in arts and humanities, it's Mayne Tithen, and she is not here today. But Mayne Tithen is number one in the arts and humanities division, and she's not here. We also, we have any other Quick Recall, Kyle Hager, didn't he come up here?
No.
Oh, we have stories, I was told about that. Uh, this is Kyle Hager. Kyle is wonderful. Now, Kyle's also part of our math council team, which some of them are up here while we go. Hello? Come up here. Kyle took a math test, and we had an experiment, okay, for sharing?
Yeah, that's fine.
If you look at his scores, his score was very deceptive, was so caught up in taking the chance he provided for his answers on the screen clock. Ah, you understand what happened? He's brilliant, I promise you. And Kyle is also Quick Recall and does math. Halal? Halal's shy. He's also on the FPS team, we'll talk about that in a moment. Halal took a math test for us at state as well. Person who's not here, another one of our starters, did Gabe just make it in?
No.
Gabe had, Gabe was eleventh in the state in science, and if he'd gotten one more question right, he didn't know Carl Sagan was the original Cosmos dude. I know. He would have been tied for eighth, so we know that was Gabe. That's how like, that's how close it is. Um, now, we have two other state championship teams to show you. First of all, future problem solving. And, but I please have all my FPSers come up here. We have, uh, they are the state champions in future problem solving. Come on up here. All right, going in the room for the four, but you know what, you need to have, you know, on a ball team, if you only invest in the four, the five that go and play, you're in trouble. So we have six, and thank you, because see, that's the maximum number I was told I could have. So I have six on my, it's, it's a neutral joke. Anyway, right here, this is Lakin Daniels and Kedever Bethan. Now, these two individuals are part of the four that went in the room. Along with them are Olivia Esef, you went with her today, she have a ball game?
No, volleyball.
Volleyball, right. They, CPS made it. And then Macy Connolly, who's playing high school basketball. And so, I mean softball. I should write everything down. Anyway, softball. And see, I can see Macy right here, because we also know something else about Macy that we're not supposed to tell yet, but you know, I can get around that by saying, individual competition, problem solving, there's only one person that can be proud to do what you want to say. But she's going to play with the team when she goes international. Come up here. Brooklyn was on the alternate first place team at the state, which it's already been explained to you with magic. And then Halal Awesome is on our team, so those are my six FPSers. We have another state championship team. See them here, come on. Here's Nancy Dyer. That's good stuff. But I might have recognized Lucy, too. Okay, come here, come on. As you know, we have the strongest community problems, everything we do is just great in our countywide. We have the strongest community problem solving program in the state. Thank you, baby. We have high school champions, we have middle school champions, we have elementary champions that you're going to recognize next month. But I wanted to introduce you to mine. These people call themselves hand-in-hand, less one, less two. And if you've heard anything of them, in the paper a couple times, they've created an app, and their goal is to try to reduce all the problems we're having with opioid use, substance use disorder, they have to help me, and babies born with NAs. And their app is a way to intimately connect with individuals that are suffering, to help them know that there are people out there that will help you. They have collected with the help of the churches in Martin County, over a thousand diapers. They have created diaper bags, they have bought two mono roofs for surrounding houses. They still have a lot of work to do, but they are our state champion community problem solving team, and here is who they are, was, and they raised volleyball practice and still came over here. Okay, this is Chloe Dyer. This is Hunter Burton, and thank goodness I have some seventh graders. And then up here, come on up here. This is Lindsay Cochran, if you don't know her. Ava Cochran, maybe you don't know her. Come on up here, Tierra. This is Pam Sayers' granddaughter, this is Tierra. And over here's Jules Davis, his dad, I couldn't even name that one again, today. And they are working very hard. Uh, not here with us tonight, Leslie Jemper's. And Brayden Pickle. And so, that's your state championship, so thank you. I promise you, your money is being well spent. Because I promise, I can't, you know, I'm almost finished with my career. You know, it's almost time for me to begin to say goodbye.
Well, ten more years.
No, I mean, seriously, I taught a long, long time. We are so blessed, and I know that, um, back in the back of the room, that Debbie said it while we go, how do we please? Look at their faces, look at what they do, pat yourself on the back and say, "We did a good job." But thank you.
Bring them all up.
Come on up, guys, teachers. Oh, I want two people. Bridgette Dyer, Missy, and my daughter, what's three? My daughters? Come here, come up here. Bridgette Dyer, she helps me with community problem solving. Help me out, her. Missy, this one is. Missy, this is Zoe's mom. Every day she comes and helps me, every day. And then my daughter, my daughter's out in the hall. Get up there with the others.
No, you're in the picture. I'm in the picture. We need two, two robes, two robes in the back, we're still hanging up real bad. Can you go back? Oh, wait, you're short, get up here. Ready?
I got it, for y'all, leave, just a second, just a second.
Brew Conley, Brew Conley's not up here.
Miss Byrd.
Brew Conley's not up here.
Now, guys, some of y'all don't know, but every, every day, I call all the staff, Mr. Byrd, on that day. And I didn't make the call today, because she's going to be here tonight, so please join me in, in wishing Miss Byrd a happy birthday. Thank you all.
Thank you. Let it just talk, good job, guys. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you in behalf of bringing these students together and getting recognized in the manner that you do, and you do so much for the community. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Burton and her staff for doing such a fine job. And I want to say one thing, I think that Johnson County School System's been around for a few years now, and for the little bit that I've been around, of all the coaches that I've met, I think you've touched more kids in a positive way, ongoing, with success, consistently, and, and I appreciate everything you've done, and if I had a trophy, I'd say you're a coach of the year.
I know that, that it takes quite some time to recognize our student groups. What better way to start a meeting than, than do that? So, I'm very, very proud of all of them. Now, on the next, we have one more group to recognize, or two more individuals to recognize. As you know, each month, I, we honor one classified person and one certified person who have gone above and beyond, and who have earned what the committee has called the Golden Eagle Award. These Golden Eagle Awards are, are very special for many, many reasons. One means, one reason being, it signifies the work that these individuals who receive those awards put in, and the effort they put in to go above and beyond for the students in Johnson County schools. Second reason is, these awards are made by students themselves at Johnson High School. The STEM group, the engineering group, actually used a 3D printer to make the eagle, and then the art department spent the time to paint and, and get the eagles ready, so it makes them a lot more special. Also, each month, I'd like to, as I do each month, thank Castle Jurich for sponsoring each one of these, uh, awards. So on to the classified person. This recipient is a Johnson High School graduate, two thousand seven. At graduation, he started working for Johnson County Schools, and has been an integral part ever since. He's the epitome of hard work, has the drive to always finish the job. He keeps the school district computers online and running for all the latest updates, he probably knows who it is now. He has several technical certifications from Apple, HP, Google, the list goes on and on. He has vast knowledge of computers, networking is amazing, it would be hard pressed to find anyone in the comments of him knows anymore. He works many early mornings, late nights, long weekends, without ever making a complaint. He probably receives more emails than anyone in the district, people depending on him every minute of every hour to make sure their lessons, that corporate technology runs smoothly. He goes above and beyond to keep our district in the forefront of all technology for the benefit of Johnson County students. Further proof of this person's wealth through our school system happened just this morning, as, as we received an assessment monitoring visit from Kentucky Department of Education. This visit covered end-of-course exams, which were a hundred percent online. Due to the dedication and front-end work from this individual and a few others, the visit received rate reviews. He doesn't realize the impact he makes on every student and staff member of our system, and he doesn't understand how much he's relied upon. Johnson County is fortunate to have this month's classified Golden Eagle recipient, my quitter, as a valued employee. And I will say, this is the first time I've not had to lie to get the person here. And now. Uh, certified person. This year, this Golden Eagle recipient will be completing her twenty-fourth year as a teacher in the Johnson County School System. She's a ninety-one graduate of Johnson High School, when she began her teaching career in nineteen ninety-four at Oil Springs Elementary before moving to Highland. The majority of her teaching career has been spent teaching primary grades. She has served as a mentor to several interns and student teachers. As she taught in the primary classroom, she found technology to be one of the ways that worked best to capture her students' attention and to enhance their learning. She attended training, data scene, and earned numerous IMAC computers for Highland Elementary. Her most recent years have been spent as Technology Integration Specialist, where she has worked with teachers and students at several schools. In addition, she has provided countywide technology professional development for teachers of all grade levels. This person has served on many educational committees through KVEC, which has given her the opportunity to work with a variety of educators throughout Eastern Kentucky. She has supported the ARI initiative since its beginning, and has secured a grant for the past four years to bring additional technology to the students of Johnson County. She is a very motivated person, and continuously keeps up with current trends in education. She has also worked diligently on her own time to secure Google certifications. One of her most recent projects has been creating Johnson County Schools ProLearn. This is an online portal where Johnson County teachers can access and attain professional development credit while working through classes and completing job embedded tasks. This Golden Eagle exemplifies a true educator, though she is very modest in her work and never expects recognition or ever shine through in the talents and displayed by the students of Johnson County School System. The staff and students of our schools are blessed to have this month's Golden Eagle Award winner, Miss Lisa Sayer, as part of the Johnson County Schools. Uh, now, I want to picture both of you.
Thanks for both of you for all the great. Moving forward, item four, approved minutes from March twenty-second. Twenty-six, two thousand eighteen's regular meeting, April twelve, two thousand eighteen's special meeting, and the bills and payroll through April nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, is there a motion to do so? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item five, renovation report, Mr. Adams.
Uh, we have two items here, and I think we can put them up together after talking about them. Uh, the item B is, is a payment for the material alimony to go along with the pay application. Uh, I have with me tonight Jerry Hammick, who is the general manager for the construction going on. Uh, we're going to let him talk a little bit about the updates to it, but when he gets finished, I do, uh, recommend we, we make both payments.
Basically, on the middle school restrooms, we're completing that phase of the project with some minor punch items that we will be working with Sherman Carter to resolve in the next few weeks. As far as the pods, we also have some minor punch items there that we were working through with Sherman Carter to resolve, and that'll be a completion of those phases. The electrical lighting phase will be finishing up this month. Controls that we have in place now at Central Elementary are still working through some bugs, but pretty much are up, up and running. Central Elementary, uh, boiler system is, is all tied in and working, and so all those things are resolved, so we should be looking pretty good in that sense, as far as controls. And we have Highlands and High School coming up next, should be seeing those in the next few weeks. And as far as controls, we're working through those things the next few weeks, should be completing all those items throughout Flatcap, uh, Central, Porter, and WR Castle. Those items will be resolved in the next couple of weeks. So it looks like at this point in the phase, finished up lighting and, uh, controls, and moving toward a closeout. That's all we have at this point.
Is there a motion to approve both items?
Motion made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there be none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six A, Mr. Kaufman.
Johnson County Schools has been a part of KEDC for several years, we're asking that you continue that membership, allow us to continue that membership for the training and opportunities that you provide.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six B, Mr. Burton.
Uh, we're asking the board to, once again, this is an annual approval of us two higher emergency substitute teachers for the upcoming school year. It's a process we have to do every year, and if the, uh, professional growth and, and the numbers of educators we're getting going into the system at the university level keep reducing, we may have to come back and ask for more in the future. So, it's, uh, the minimum requirements on this is sixty-four college hours and two-point-six per higher GPA, but most of these folks are working towards becoming fully certified educators.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there be none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six C, Mr. Yance.
Uh, we'd like to ask for your approval to participate in the non-traditional instruction program for the eighteen-nineteen school year. It's what allows us to take non-instructional days on some of our Wednesday days, so we don't have to count those as making a day.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six D, Mr. Kaufman.
Asking that the board approve a rewards program agreement with BSN Sports. We, if approved, we're under no obligation to buy solely from them, but there are rebates and rewards offered.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six E, Mr. Kaufman.
We would like to participate in a Homeland Security Grant. In order to do that, we need more approval, uh, and also approval of a resolution that was written between ourselves and Garrett.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Any opposed, motion carries. Six F, start off with Mr. Crum.
Uh, we've got, uh, two events there. One's the awakening concert, which we've been holding annually the last few years. And Point of Joy is wanting to have their, um, their recital thing. They've done that in the past as well, Spirit School.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, vote.
Okay. Second? Thank you. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Robin?
Uh, we have Mountain Camp that, uh, did a camp at Central Elementary last year, and they would like to do that again this year. And then we have Camp Shawnee that would also like to have their summer camp there again this year.
Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Mr. Eastep?
Uh, we're at Turning Point Dance Center, uh, wants to have a recital. Uh, we have their entrance on file, that's in June, 14th, 15th.
Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Chris? Pierce?
Mr. Pierce is not here, he's asking permission for the Flatcap reunion, June 2nd.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six G, Ms. Coleman.
We're asking permission to do this type of summer fed service program again this year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six H, Mr. Cottler.
We're asking for your approval to participate in the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant, which we have partnered with data scene to try to get, uh, more workstation computers within our district, uh, at no cost to the district.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six I, Mr. Cottler, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Adams.
Uh, we're asking for permission to lease three vehicles for the upcoming school year. Uh, I have some rough numbers for you, uh, on, on those vehicles. We have missed the deadline for 2018 models. So, uh, we have to wait until June to get 2019s. They'll, they'll build them in July, and they'll deliver them in probably October. Uh, basically what they do is, is when you lease a vehicle, they go through and, and we pick out what, what we need and the needs for us, and it matches here. It's a very basic vehicle, there's, there's no, uh, there's no bells and whistles to it. It's get in it, put it, and drive and go, basically. So we're, we're looking at two regular cab Dodge trucks and one crew cab Dodge truck. I have a fleet of vehicles down there right now that run from 1998 to 2003. Uh, we probably, uh, have one vehicle, and it's a 2016 model, that, that, that's, that we can depend on. The others are, have hit that stage where we're right at 200,000 or over 200,000. Uh, for example, I have a 1998 Ford Explorer that the motor's ready to go out of. We're just, we're babying it, trying to get through. I have a 2001 van that, uh, the frame is not in the best of shape in. I have a 2003 Chevrolet truck that goes in to reduce engine power, just out of the blue. I'm lucky that the guy that does our mechanic work down there now on, on the vehicles has a computer, so he resets it, that's his vehicle to drive. So, maybe going down the road, that'll pull off to the side. So, uh, we have milked our fleet of vehicles for about everything that we can get. I know that I don't have any, because we missed the deadline of, of 2018s to build those, that, that ended, uh, actually it ended last month. I don't have any exact numbers. I can, I can answer any questions on numbers that we think it's gonna be. I, I am asking you to do the preliminary paperwork today to allow Mr. Cottler to, uh, send in the application, the, uh, the credit app and the maintenance plan. We, we've worked out a deal, uh, if, if we can do this, to where we'll have a maintenance plan involved in this already, and that goes through, that's, that's with the truck. They do all the weight work for us. Uh, they find it, they build it, they bring, they bring it, bring it to us, and, and when the lease is up, they sell it at whatever price they think it's worth. Anything over that is money that goes back to us for the next vehicle. So, again, that, uh, I know that, I know that's kind of vague, but, but vague, but I, as far as sitting down and dealing with numbers for you, I can give you rough numbers if you have any questions on it.
Mr. Adams, do you know what the interest rate on those leases?
I do not right now. He doesn't either. He'll have to wait until every, all the paperwork is in order next month to see in May what it's gonna be. He, he will get us the best possible deal. Originally, it was through Dodge, it was like a, was it a 1.9 or something like that? I think originally when we were doing this, so, uh, we'll have to see what offers they're gonna put out on the table, what rebates are gonna be.
Bill Deckery, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the program as presented?
So may.
Is there a second?
Say.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If there be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six J, Mr. Crum.
The, uh, FFA Greenhouse Group is, uh, wanting to go, um, to, uh, Dollywood and to the Paramount Botanical Gardens. It's a trip they took, uh, I think a couple of years ago. And it's a great, uh, like a real life working experience for kids. They actually take them behind the scenes of Dollywood. They get to go in before hours and see how they prepare and get all the, the, the gardens and all the things they're prepared each day. And then they also will get to go and do a hike and go up and, and see this at that Paramount. So it's give a nice see of what that career would be like. Uh, it's all money raised, uh, through their greenhouse.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We also have the superintendent personnel report, item eight.
As, as I've done every month this year, I have to talk about my new simple head training. I've gone through all of the seven standards that are required. I just want to let you know that in June, I do have to have another meeting which will have to present my capstones, culmination of all of the standards and what I, the work I've done this year. So I have that scheduled for June 19th. I will have our executive, my executive coach, Frank Carter, who was here with us in January. And my mentor, Dr. Roger Fleisch, Lawrence County. 11 and 8.
Lunch on your own?
Yes. And I would like to say too, to take a spin and say, I know that we spend, uh, we got to spend a lot of time with the students at that recognition. Uh, I just don't think there's a better way to spend our time than, than to celebrate the successes of all our student staff in Johnson County. So thanks to all of you all for that.
With that said, there is a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second?
Say.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Next meeting will be at Highlands. Third Monday of the month. 8/21.